Good morning, DeSoto, and welcome to Focus on Leadership. I am your mayor, Rachel Proctor, and I am the host for today's program. And I am pleased, I'm so excited, I don't know if you can tell with this mask on, but I am so excited to be bringing back the Focus on Leadership series with some very, very special guests. Many of them, probably you know their faces, you know their names because they have been longstanding supporters and just leaders in our community. So I'm excited to have them, and I'm especially excited as we bring Women's History Month to a close. We have some women who have served as DeSoto Mayor Pro Tems. Council members, of course, but all of them have in common, we have the sorority here, we'll say, of being DeSoto Mayor Pro Tems. So I'm excited, and I'll start to my very far left. Thelma Clardy, who actually served on the DeSoto City Council from 2002 to 2008. Then we have Patricia Ledbetter, who served on the City Council from 2008 to 2014. And then we have, right here immediately to my left, Denise Valentine, who served on the DeSoto City Council from 2006 to 2012. So as you can see with those timelines, they have served our community well. They have served for a number of years. And so I'm just gonna kind of get started with talking to you all about some of your experiences on the DeSoto City Council. And I'm gonna start actually with you, Thelma, about some of your service. Now, something that is unique that I want to highlight about your particular service is you were the first African-American woman to actually serve on the DeSoto City Council. So tell us a little bit about maybe one of your favorite things about serving, or just kind of talk a little bit about your experience with being the first African-American woman to serve on the DeSoto City Council.
Well, it was definitely a unique experience, you know, when I was elected and I didn't have an opponent both times I ran. So I was really glad about that. But just being able to get involved with the city, I had lived in the city for a while, and I saw some things that needed to be changed and that we needed to be involved. You know, the African-American women needed to be involved in the political process. And I've been involved, I've been interested in politics since high school. So I was glad to be on the council. I felt like I brought a different perspective to it because I was not only African-American, but I was the only woman on the council at that time. So it was unique, and I feel like it was a very rewarding experience as well.
And then you were able to bring your expertise because you're an attorney by profession. So you were able to bring that to the table. So that's amazing. Can you tell us a little bit about, maybe like I said, something that stands out to you? With maybe, tell us a little bit, maybe like one of your favorite things or something that you remember. I know around that time, I have a little bit of history in DeSoto myself, having grown up here, some of the things that were kind of, in my mind, I'm thinking when you were around were the Walmart and even here at Town Center. So can you tell us a little bit about that?
Right, we did have the Walmart issue, and I remember that meeting very well because we went until about 3 o'clock in the morning. But I felt like it was very important to listen to all the speakers and the persons from the community. I was the only one who voted against the Walmart, but I knew that it would pass because, quite frankly, we needed the tax revenue. So, but I felt like people needed to know that they had someone who had listened to them. And it was so funny because I was still the only woman on the council at the time. I had one woman who wrote me and said, "I didn't vote for you, but you have more balls than all those men on the council."
I thought that was so cute.
And then, of course, you know, I was on the council when we competed for the All-America City Award. So that was very rewarding, practicing the skit and everything and doing it before audience, the night before we left for Anaheim, and then going out to Anaheim, California, competing and being awarded the award and getting the unanimous vote of all 10 judges. So that was very rewarding, the highlight of my tenure on the council.
Now, what years did you actually serve as Mayor Pro Tem?
I served as Mayor Pro Tem 2007, 2008. Bobby Waddle was the mayor at the time.
Mayor at the time, okay. Okay, and Patricia, you served from 2008 to 2014, and I actually had the privilege of sitting alongside you and serving with you. Now, you actually served at a very interesting time as well because you served during the 2008 recession.
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit more about like some things that were kind of going on here in DeSoto during that time?
Sure. And one thing I wanted to add is to answer your question also, but to follow up to them, that the things that she did, I benefited from.
Yeah.
So, you know, in the city. So I think we build on each other's, what we've done in our service on the council, whatever the issues were. Because I definitely, you know, go to Walmart, and we did need the sales tax.
I go there a lot, too.
Yeah, me too. Yes, so I was on the council, and one of the very first things that happened was the recession in 2008, 2009. And so we had to deal with an issue of less money coming in from the tax assessors and still having to decide, are we gonna have the same services? So we did not have to lay anybody off, and we were able to survive, I believe, because we had hired a great city manager with Dr. Richardson. And he was able to see us through that time. And then just at 2009, we had the major ice storm in DeSoto.
Oh, yeah.
And so because we had a shortfall in money, that cost almost a quarter of a million dollars.
Wow.
And so as a result of that, we set up the Rainy Day Fund because 250,000 is a lot of money when it hasn't come in the previous year.
That's right.
So those were important things. And hiring Dr. Richardson, I consider one of the best things we did.
Yeah, that's good. And I love what you said about how each woman left something for the next generation and the next council and the next community member and the next resident, that we benefit from that, and we benefit from each other's service. And so it's just so important to me, just as a young woman and coming up behind all of you all, because there's an old saying, and I love this saying, and it says, "If you see a turtle on a fence post, know that it did not get there by itself." So to have the three of you sitting here, you know, just is great examples. I mean, I feel myself getting a little emotional because it's so important, and I think even just with this pandemic, it's given me a whole new perspective on just people and the roles that people play in our lives. I think a lot of times we take that for granted, and we take each other's service and the sacrifices that you all make, you know, to serve at the time. And Thelma, like you said, just having been the only woman, and not just the only woman, but the only African-American woman, and I can only imagine, we probably don't even have time in today's broadcast to really unpack, you know, the challenges that you faced, and you were kind of the forerunner in that aspect. So I just appreciate you all. And so Denise, you're somebody, and even just looking at your attire today, that exudes art, right? And I just love you for that, and that's just something I've always admired about you, too, your passion for the arts. And so can you tell us a little bit, because you have several things, I could probably rattle off a few things right now, that you were very instrumental in bringing to the council and really championing a lot of efforts, and I know arts is one of those. So tell us a little bit about your time there.
Yes, the arts was a major objective of mine to work on. It's funny, people say, you know, "Were you in the Arts Commission?" I was never on the Arts Commission. When I became a member of City Council, I wanted to see DeSoto make arts, music, and sports be the identity for the city. And so I became the liaison to the Arts Commission, and you couldn't tell me from a member of the Arts Commission, once that happened. We worked very hard. I had been attending plays in Fort Worth at their theater, and I would always see my neighbors, and that bothered me. So I said, "We need to bring that right here." Also, at the same time, when I first came on the council, was when we had the vote on this Hampton Road redevelopment that started right here at Town Center to decide whether or not to put in the apartments and businesses right here. And so that just fed right into the vision of having the corner theater, have restaurants and other businesses, people living close by. It just all fit in the vision. So that was a major tenet. You mentioned, though, about how you feel about, how you get the feelings about people, especially during the pandemic. One of the things that I wanted to make sure I did while I was on City Council was to make sure that we reached the people. So I worked very hard to form DeSoto Police and Clergy, which has now transformed into DeSoto Police and Community. But I wanted to be able to connect the church with the people and the people who were in trouble. You know, anytime you're meeting with the police, it's not a fun time. So I wanted to be able to put a person who deals with social issues, being the clergy, along with a policeman to be able to handle some of those issues. Predecessor, if you will, to the Domestic Violence Commission, but with a different angle, bringing the clergy right in to where the problem is. So those were very instrumental parts of my tenure.
And it's so good that you brought that up because, again, it just kind of goes to show you the impact and how it is still reverberating because DeSoto Police and Clergy, you know, albeit it's changed a little bit in terms of name and some of the focus, is still in existence today. So that speaks to good leadership, that speaks to good vision, to know what the community needs, because I think that it's not hard when we talk about what the needs of, I think people want, most people want the same things. They want a safe community, they want a clean community, they want one where they can feel like they can come to their city government and know that their needs are heard. And so for that organization to still be in existence today speaks to your leadership, and so we thank you for that. Now, something that all of you all have been a part of in some way is dining and dialogue. I know that there were some aspects of it when you talk about the All-America City, that dining and dialogue and some of those things, you know, had, you know, they were all kind of interwoven in there. Tell us a little bit about, I guess, what, and maybe we can tie in the All-America City aspect, because everybody, if you don't know anything else about DeSoto, you know that we are All-America City. So kind of talk a little bit, and either any of you can kind of chime in wherever you see fit. So what actually brought us to that point? What were the issues, right, that were happening in our city in terms of, well, I don't want to kind of, I'll let you all talk about it, I could probably say what I want to say, but this is about you all today. But tell us a little bit about dining and dialogue, the All-America City, how those things kind of interjected and got us to that point.
Well, I can talk a little bit about that because the Dining and Dialogue Initiative was started when I was on the council. I had seen a similar program in the city of Dallas, so I brought the idea to our then mayor, Michael Hurd, and he ran with it. And so we got it together, and we started having some dinners, addressing the issues that we're facing in the city of DeSoto, you know, the education issue, social unrest and civil rights, things like that, racial issues. And so we started having the dinners on a quarterly basis. We do still have them, although they've kind of been on postponement during the pandemic, but we do still have that program. And that was one of the programs we highlighted during our All-America City competition. And I think Denise, if I'm not mistaken, one of the ideas she had, we highlighted that, the neighborhood program, I think it was three programs we highlighted in the skit. The Dining and Dialogue was one, the HOA involvement, and there was one other one, I think our youth programs.
Yes, that was it.
And that's what got us to win the award.
Thelma passed the baton to me for Dining and Dialogue, and so I led that, outside of City Council, I led that effort for several years.
Because you were not a council member, I want to make sure we are clear on that, you were not a council member during the All-America City.
I was not. As a matter of fact, Thelma had brought the idea, and then Mayor Hurd had asked, and City Manager Jim Baugh had asked if someone would take this as a citizen and make this happen in the future. And I said I would put aside anything I had, which I did have some other things going, to lead this effort because I thought it was so important for our city. And so we made those dinners happen, and we had great conversations, I met so many people. As a matter of fact, on that board is the late Gordon. We just talked about him passing from COVID.
James Zander.
James and Linda were on there. So we, but that dinner just exemplified what we needed to do as a community, and that's why we won this award. Because as a community, we were working really hard to try to get along, not have a huge amount of white flight and all of that. The play itself, yes, I did participate in the play. I'll never forget the day I got the call from Jim Baugh saying, "We would like for you to volunteer and be part of this." And I was like, "Jim, you know, I don't have time, I've got da-da-da-da." And then I got a call back saying, "You don't understand, we really need you." And so...
I think they called that being voluntold.
Yes, I was voluntold. But the play had to be, you know, a short period, so we only had a short period to tell the story, and I thought we did a great job in that play of telling the story of the factors that made us an All-America City.
That's good. Patricia, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I always thought it was a good program. I benefited from them already in place. And one of the things I liked about it is originally it went into people's homes. They invited, the city didn't tell who was going to be at the table, that, you know, the neighborhood decided, and that the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem would go from house to house and try to make all of the dinners that night. So they had access to us where they might not come up here and have access to us. To me, it really covered those areas.
And what better time, what better time to talk about issues that might be a little touchy than over food? Oh, it was just, it just opened people up.
Right. I remember one of my favorite dinners, it was at Mr. Crosetto's house, I believe. He had a seven-course meal.
I remember him, yes.
It was, I want to go back. He really said it out for us, and good conversation because then Mayor Curtis C. McCowen and her husband Leon was there. So we had some really good conversation, as well as great food.
Yeah, and I can remember my first Dining and Dialogue experience, and it's a little bit, again, I don't know if I'm just emotional because of, I don't know what it is, I don't know if I'm just excited to see you all or what, but it was at James Zander's house, him and Linda opened there. And actually, I was not on council yet. I think I was getting ready to be on council within a few months, I think, because it was a special election that particular time. And it was at their home, and so that was a very special time for me, and I'm just kind of, all of this is kind of coming back to me now, that that was my first Dining and Dialogue experience was in his home. He welcomed me in, and so, him and Linda both, and so.
You know, another good factor about that program is it did involve the youth. We invited youth to come in as not only guests, but to also be facilitators, which it's, you know, a lot of times if you don't have kids in the school, or you know, you're not, if you're a more mature person that, you know, is not involved a lot with kids, you may have the wrong impression of what our kids are like.
That's right.
And this gave a great exposure for our kids.
Wow. Well, that is, that kind of segues me into our next question, and Thelma kind of spoke a little bit about, when she talked about some tough decisions that they had to make. But tell us a little bit about something that you feel maybe was one of your toughest decisions that you actually had to make. And anybody can go, it's...
I could tell you the toughest decision I had to make was this one, the one about this used-to-be parking lot becoming the core of the Hampton Road redevelopment project. There was a lot of pushback from the community. There was a lot of people, especially on the consultant side, that had talked to us about all the pros. There were many, many, many meetings with the public, a lot of input, but when it came down to actually making the decision, it was really tough that night to make that decision. I did vote for it. I do think that it was a good decision. I do have regrets because there were supposed to be a lot more businesses involved in the project, but I can't picture this area the way it was. It's beautiful. So I just can't even picture the, it was just parking lot people.
Well, I told, I think you weren't here yet, and I was telling them back in high school, that was the, that parking lot was the hangout spot, because after the football games on Friday night, everybody would come to Whataburger, and literally that parking lot would be full of cars from like the teenagers and just everybody coming on over. And so we were probably one of the ones in opposition to putting that in our parking lot, because I don't think we've ever really had another spot in our city where our kids, you know, could come after the games and hang out, and maybe that's a good thing, I don't know, good, I don't know how you feel about it. But we were really, really sad to know that we would no longer have that spot over there, so.
You know, as, when you are an elected official, you have to weigh the good of the community versus the strong, loud voices of the opposition. And you don't know, the people who are for something don't necessarily speak out.
Yeah.
So you have to be able to weigh both sides and make a decision. Thelma mentioned the Walmart decision. I was actually on Planning and Zoning Commission when that decision was made from Planning and Zoning, and that was the first meeting that they gave us a back way out. And I had never felt afraid of my community, but I was glad that night we had a back way out because the meeting was so hostile. So like I said, you know, that as a political figure, I think that's the thing that I learned the most over that time period, was how to weigh, and you never really feel comfortable in, "Yes, yes, yes, I did the right thing," but you really have to weigh the good of the people as a whole versus just the, you know, 10 or so that is standing in front of you.
That's right, and it's so good, I love that you said that, because even, you know, right now, and you know, I've served on, serving on council, we've had those moments where it's kind of like, "Ah, did I really do the right thing?" You know, and, but like you said, a lot of times, the people that are okay, sometimes when you're in a place of complacency or you're satisfied with how things are, you don't really speak up as opposed to the people that, you know, because even people that don't like each other can come together if it's something that everybody's in opposition to, if they have a common hate. I've heard this, there's this quote that goes, "Something that unites more than a common love is a common hate." And so when people are in opposition, when they're upset, they will come out. And like you said, sometimes it's just a handful, and they will lead you to believe, if you're not careful as a leader, lead you to believe that they speak for the greater majority of what the community wants. And so you've got to be very resolute, and you've got to do your homework, you know, and that's what I tell new council members and people just wanting to be in leadership in general. And Patricia, you always kind of kept me on my toes with, make sure you're, you know, you're reading, before the meetings, come to the meetings prepared. Don't just sit in the work session 15 minutes before and glaze, like you've got to do your research, you've got to show up prepared and know what you're talking about, because, and I always say this, I always reference this, Sandy Ressis told me this, at my very first retreat, council retreat, he said, you know, "Don't take sitting in these seats lightly." You know, it's great that you're here, but he said that, you know, the decisions you're making have long-term implications on people's lives and just the landscape of an entire city, because what you have to realize is that once a project or a development is on the ground, it's on the ground, right? There's no, "Oh, let's not do that," like, it doesn't work like that. So you guys have always just exemplified that, come prepared, do your homework, know, you know, what you're talking about, and so that you can make the best decision and not get caught up in all of the voices and all of that. And so I'm learning that even more as mayor, that you cannot get caught up in the voices and all of that, because again, you know, every group, right, is a special interest group if we just keep it real, you know, HOAs, you know, they all, everybody has something that they want to see, and so, you know, so you've got to really be, you know, resolute in your thinking and the way that you approach decision-making.
But, you know, I agree with Denise, she had to make those decisions. I thought every decision was important, and you are elected to make those important decisions. I don't know that I have one tough one, but, you know, to speak to what she talked about, it's not that you're opposed to Walmart, it's that you're putting it in a neighborhood. And, you know, recently, we put in that DeSoto Market, and so it is in a neighborhood that probably supported that shopping center more than maybe they did when they saw what was the potential of what might happen. But I think that when you go into neighborhoods, you have to have to balance the commercial, the retail, and the neighborhood, and they do pay taxes, they all pay taxes. So I think those are important decisions, regardless of what they were.
And one thing that you said, Rachel, that made me think about something, you know, it always made me very concerned when I would hear people say, "I don't vote in City Council School Board elections because it's not that important." But as I told them, I said, "It's really more important." Because these are people at the grassroots you're dealing with, these are issues and discussions we're having that affect you directly, rather than either state or federal issues, you know, so it's important to be involved. I would just like to encourage everybody, take a point of personal privilege, we have City Council School Board elections coming up on May 1st, so I hope everybody will get out and vote because this is important.
And if you're not registered, you have until April 1st.
April 1st, which is Thursday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow. Oh, my goodness, these months are flying, by goodness. Yes, 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 yes.
And I might remind you that you're probably the luckiest mayor because you get all yours on technology when you have to do your homework. It was delivered to our homes and put...
Oh, talk a little bit about that, talk a little bit about that, because I know some of the changes were coming as you guys were, I was coming on, so I think we had gotten iPads or something, or maybe y'all had laptops or something before that.
I had the manuals brought to my house.
Oh, my goodness.
A day or two days before the meeting, we finally got, I think, computers as I was going out.
Yeah, and I remember the iPads, I still hate iPads.
I do, too.
Any other device but an iPad. But I started out with the huge binders, too, and everything was delivered, and then you got a chance to read. And then as time turned, you know, like I said, we got the iPads, but even with the iPads, I still got the paper copy, and I still read, so.
I've always preferred paper. So I'm trying to become more paperless now.
Yeah, and believe it or not, I prefer paper because I guess, like, this little thing here, like, this is a weapon of mass distraction, okay? Like, seriously, I cannot, and I'm a reader anyway, so I have books everywhere, I just love books, I love to hold books, so I actually prefer to have, when I'm studying something or reading and researching, I do print down, and I do recycle everybody. So once I'm done reading it, I make sure that it makes it into the recycle bin, but I actually prefer that, too. Yeah, I rarely use my iPad because I like to have it there. And then technology, you know, it works when it wants to, and when it doesn't want to work, it doesn't want to work. And so to avoid a lot of those little snafus, I always have a printed copy to read from and take notes and stuff like that, so.
Well, the pandemic has kind of forced us to become more technologically savvy. As a lawyer now, all my hearings, we don't go to court anymore, we do Zoom and everything. So we've actually even had classes on that, some of the judges conducted classes of Zoom or webinars on how to use Zoom and everything, and then each county is so funny because they not only have Zoom, they have Microsoft Teams and WebEx, so you have to kind of be familiar with all of them depending on what jurisdiction you're dealing with.
And a question for you, Rachel, I mean, do you like conducting City Council on Zoom meetings? Is it something that has really worked for citizen engagement? I was curious about that.
I personally, if I just have to have a preference, I like being in the council chambers. It's just a feeling that I get when we're in here, having been able to experience both at this point, I do like it better for citizens in terms of engagement, because a lot of citizens, especially our senior citizens and those that are not as technologically advanced, they do have sometimes, we've been finding, there are some issues, which, there are some things we can do, I think, to improve our system and the way that we receive citizens' comments, but there's, to me, there's no feel like being able to come in here and address us from that podium and to be able to just share your thoughts with your council. So I personally, and I've actually been surveying, and we've been talking back and forth as a council as much as we can about what is getting back in the council chambers safely look like, and so we are working on that because that honestly is my preference. However, like I said, you know, you adapt, you know, you begin to adapt, and so I think that the community has adapted well and, you know, and still been able to engage with us as much as they can, but my preference would be to get back in the council chambers.
Something I'd like to tap on that we've kind of talked about is that people that are on City Council and, you know, elected to mayor are real people. And they're reachable, and they should be. Uh, and they're reachable, and they should be. Uh, that was something before I got involved with the city, uh, boards and things like that. I always thought of them as those people over there.
Yeah.
Uh, I never knew, excuse me, I never knew whether they were, uh, you know, nice people or, you know, anything, I just, but as I became more involved in, uh, things here at the city, I realized that these are real people, they are generally nice people, uh, and have feelings. Uh, and can, if you explain to them your side, they really want to hear from you. Uh, so I would encourage people to get involved in the city. Uh, because that, it, then you really see that this is where the rubber meets the road in terms of how you live, where you live, what's around you, all of those things. And, and those decisions are made by people who are just like you, trying to do the best they can for their neighborhood with the best information they have. If you have additional information, come forward, share it. Uh, I just, uh, uh, it was such an eye-opener to me how easy it is to get your opinion heard.
Yeah.
And, uh, sitting on this side of the dais, how important it was to hear what people had to say.
That's so good.
Yeah.
That's really good. And I think that, you know, one of the things that when I was running this time around, and, and, and I emphasized that my priority is to make everybody feel comfortable knowing that you have an open city government. We want your ideas. We, we, the seven of us can't do it. Like you, there's just no way we can, we can do it on our own. And so to make them feel like, so they're not intimidated. And I think a lot of people are just honestly intimidated because they don't know. And that's why you said it's so important that you get involved, realize that we're, like you said, and for, for, you know, for a long, long, long time period, other than, you know, what happened this January, we are completely, we were completely volunteers. Now, of course, we know that the council is, receives some level of compensation. However, for many, many, many years before that was even a thought or even an, an option, we were volunteers, you know, and, and a lot of people didn't know that. They assumed that we were getting paid. And especially, you know, out, they, you know, Mayor Sherman, they would always say, "I can't believe he doesn't get paid for that." Because literally, he was, literally, you know how they say you can't be two places at one time? I think he could actually be two places at one time.
I think so too. Yes, I, I served under him, uh, as mayor pro tem. And I tell you, I learned so much from Mayor Carl Sherman. And he was, he was out and in and busy.
Yes.
He was.
Yes.
Yes, that is so good. Well, our time is, let me see where we are on time. I want to ask you guys, because it is a closing Women's History Month, and so I want to make sure that we get that in. What is something, or, and you can take either one of these questions. I'll give you guys two options. Why do you think it is important for women to serve in leadership roles? Or you can give us a piece of advice that you would give to a young woman that wants to go in public service. So I'll give you a second to think about which one you want, and I'll just toss it over to you guys, and y'all can take it from there.
Well, mine is, is easy. Uh, I had a mentor, I still have this mentor, who told me when I was, uh, coming out of corporate America and deciding where I wanted to volunteer my services, to remember that just your presence changes the conversation.
Yeah, absolutely.
That is so meaningful, uh, especially, I was coming into a world that was dominated by men. Um, and, uh, I don't, uh, so we don't even have to go into details, just, just understand.
Just know.
Just understand that because a woman is now in the room, uh, the conversation has changed. And that means you are already impactful, and you don't have to talk. If you don't, you don't have to just talk, talk, talk. You talk, and when you do, it's important. So, um, that, that's what I would advise any young woman to remember. Just your presence changes the conversation in the room.
And I agree with you, Denise, and I think you're evidence of that. I know that we all, uh, participated on a board or commission, which was a volunteer, um, activity. You were library board, I was arts, you were planning and zoning. So we, we were there, and because you, I was on arts when you also were the liaison. When you were at the table, arts became important. I don't think arts was going to be important for as much for...
That's so good, yeah.
Or Bobby Waddle, you know?
Exactly.
Their, their view and was different. So I think that shows evidence right there, that the arts, when we went to our retreat and we come up with a mission statement and a plan, that was part of our mission statement. Because if you don't know where you're going, you'll, you'll never know when you get there. So I think those, those things were very important, and I enjoy the retreats the best. So I would encourage women to get involved, to participate, to show up, find a place. And I've always said in DeSoto, there is a place for you if you want to be involved.
Yes, absolutely.
Whether it's cleaning your streets or being on Keep DeSoto Beautiful, or the library board, or the boards and commissions that the city has. So, and that your, your participation is important, but to please listen. So after you speak, listen to the next person.
Yeah.
Because their voice is important and their participation is important.
I agree with what both of you all said. I think it is very important. Certainly, being the only woman on the council for a time, I think it did make a difference. My being present, uh, did make a difference in everything, and it did have an impact. And to young women, I always tell people to get involved, you know? My mother used to always say to me, "Why are you so involved? You're always going to a meeting here and there." I said, "Mama, because I want to be involved, you know?" And of course, with the pandemic, that's cut that out. But I said, "With Zoom meetings a lot, that has helped a lot." So, "Oh, you don't have a Zoom meeting tonight?" So, but I think I have always believed that it's so important to be involved. And unless you, you are, if you're not involved, you don't have the right to complain.
That's right.
And I've always told people, "Well, if you're complaining, what are you going to do about it? What's your solution to the problem?" Because you can't just sit back and do nothing. So you have to be involved. And I would tell any young lady that your voice does matter. You do have a voice, and get out there and get involved, be prepared. And I am just really excited about this past year, how I have seen the millennials and young people get involved in different issues. You know, you're a millennial, Rachel, so you're a prime example. So I'm very glad, and, you know, I call myself an old head now. It's time for the young people to come and get involved. I've been there, done that, so, but I am willing to continue to contribute in whatever way I can. And it is about being prepared, do your homework, and have your support group too.
Yeah.
You do need that.
Yes.
And that's so good to hear, and we're, we're wrapping up, but that is so good to hear because, again, I think sometimes as young people, we can be fierce and we can be, and, you know, but we need seasoned wisdom. We need that to help us stay grounded and just for history, and to just for that, for that sound wisdom that we can lean on and refer back to and go back to as we're getting out there and, and like you said, paving the way for others that are coming behind us. And so, thank you guys. Thank you all for, for being here, thank you all for sharing, thank you for your service. Thank you for agreeing to indulge me today. Um, I know that our community and those that will watch even the replays will get so much out of this, especially our young women that are coming up in leadership. And so I want to thank our panel today, uh, Ms. Thelma Clardy, Ms. Patricia Ledbetter, and Ms. Denise Valentine. And I would also like to thank our viewers for tuning in to our first of many Focus on Leadership programs. Now, we are going to, uh, we're going to turn our mics off, and we're going to actually have a short pictorial featuring all of the women who have served or are currently serving on the DeSoto City Council. So we will turn it over to Ms. Kathy Jones, and we will view that now. Thank you.